Public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of this meeting is notified to superintendent's office with the desire to speak and provided with these guidelines. One request, written comments received no later than 12:00 p.m. on the date of the meeting will also be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. So welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from our meeting on April 29th.
Of April 29th?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. All right, next up, we'll hear from our student representatives.
All right, so first I want to clarify that the senior survivors is not a school sanctioned event. I thought it was, and then I saw the rules, and it is not. So, I'm very sorry, but at the same time, there are a lot of school sanctioned events for the seniors coming up, one of them being the senior barbecue on May 23rd from 11:00 p.m. Nope, and I'm lost. Oh, it's also their last day. The following Wednesday is prom, which is at the Doubletree Hilton in Manchester, and the after-prom will be from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. That's the time. I messed up. Thank you to all who have donated and volunteered, and there still is opportunity to do that if you haven't already. Friday is the banquet at Westford Regency, and Saturday, June 7th, is the graduation at the Songas Center at 4:00 p.m. And this past Friday and Saturday was CHS Theater Guild had their first ever cabaret, which featured a senior number, live pit, dance numbers, and solos. And what I think is most importantly, tomorrow at 5:00 o'clock at Simonton Stadium, the CHS rugby team is going against another undefeated team, Walden Catholic, for their senior night.
Get it. You guys are gonna crush it. Nobody else excited about rugby?
Already gotta go.
So Senior Dean Salina, who's a Massachusetts CPA, the Certified Public Accountant Student Ambassador, and is also a student, or is also part of the Business Innovation Pathways here at the high school, hosted an event in the Career Center with Ms. Cunningham for students who were interested in learning more about the field of accounting, and Dean brought in CPAs from E.J. Callahan to share their expertise and help students build resumes. And then last week, District Attorney Marion Ryan hosted the Empowered Girls Conference and invited 12 Chelmsford High School junior girls who went, and they listened to women influencers who made impacts in their fields and made change, and they talked, and the girls talked to women like Christina Rex, who's a Babson entrepreneur and power, and Power Women's Hockey League Vice President and Foreign Affairs Officer that worked with Kamala Harris. And then this past Earth Day, we had our Ecology Club and the football team clean up the outside of CHS, and congratulations to Junior Gable Gray for finishing fifth at the Penn Realized, and he threw 187 feet, and congratulations to Senior Thomas Brown on being selected as one of the Boston Globe's 2024-2025 Winter Wrestling Athletes of the Year.
Great.
I thought you were gonna clap for that.
All right, any other good news to share?
Yeah, so just a bit of good news is it's Teacher Appreciation Week as well as Nurses Appreciation Week. There are many emails that are going around with all sorts of fun treats, the PTOs have been putting together for everybody. It's so great when you get to go around to the schools and partake in them, because get a little ice cream here, get a cookie over there, it's all, you know, good fun. But thank you to everybody and everything that they do. One week is not enough to appreciate everybody, but at least there is something out there for them every single day to have a little fun.
All right, anybody else have anything else to share? Okay, move on. It doesn't look like we have any public comments, so we'll move to new business, and we have a couple presentations.
Right, yes, we have two presentations this evening. We're gonna start off with Stephanie Quinn, who's here. She's the Department Coordinator for History and Social Sciences for the Chelmsford Public Schools. She's gonna go through her program and give you some updates about, and highlights about what's happening in that department. Go ahead, Stephanie, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thanks for inviting us here tonight. I'm excited to kind of talk to you about what we've been doing in our apartment, our department, over the last year, give you some updates, but I think that the majority of the presentation is gonna focus on past, present, and future, so we're gonna be looking ahead to some of the activities that will be coming up, or ideas that we have generated for the celebration of America 250 as well. So keeping that in mind, we're gonna move forward. Some of the items I'm gonna talk about tonight include our investigating history curriculum, the civics projects, and civics MCAS, which our eighth graders are gonna be taking in just a couple weeks. Different programming opportunities that we've had, we've created at the high school in order to really prepare students for now and in the future as they look towards their potential careers. We'll talk about student and community engagement, because we have one of the most active and involved communities I have ever witnessed. It's amazing how many people are willing to come in and talk to our students, work with our students, support our students in a variety of ways. We'll talk a little bit about preparing for the 250 celebration, and then some ideas for our fourth grade families who may want to look to travel this summer, because there are some programs that they can take advantage of as a result of being, just completing their fourth grade year. So we'll start with investigating history. Investigating history is a curriculum that is created, or has been created, by a number of, a number of educational, sorry, a number of different educational directors, as well as DSE. So this was a collaboration with all kinds of people, but primarily, DSE has put this out the last few years and created an OER. So I know we love all of our acronyms, right, but an OER is an educational resource that is open. It's an open educational resource, so it's free. It's digital, so that we have access to it, and our teachers have begun to utilize this curriculum in grades five, six, and seven over the last couple of years. It's been a slow rollout, so that we all feel comfortable with the material and the resources, but it's been going very well, and I think the students are finding the curriculum and the activities really engaging. Students have the opportunity to really dive into primary sources and secondary sources. They are presented with engaging questions, intriguing questions at the beginning of every unit, and in a lot of the lessons, so that they have the opportunity to really think about, about history and make connections between events in their past and even in their current lives. So we really want students to start thinking historically, and this is one of the ways in which we've been able to do that. So we're really additionally shifting a lot of the emphasis of the workload, too, from the teacher delivering the information to the student gathering the information, giving students an opportunity to build their own questions as well. A lot of these skills are going to be essential for them as they move up through their career in education, and certainly, as Lana can attest to, just in our AP research as well, where the students have the opportunity to come up with their own individual questions and determine what evidence is important to include and what evidence isn't important to include, and what resources are valuable, or resources maybe we should stay away from. So there's all kinds of skills that we are gonna see in those higher-level senior courses that we're trying to build those skills in middle and elementary school, too, and we'll talk about the elementary in a minute. So primarily, we've been doing this in grades five, six, and seven, so I've given a little bit of insight over the last couple of years about what we've been doing. We, when the state first released it, the curriculum, we had access to it, we looked at it as a department, we started poking around with different activities and extracting different activities, so that teachers could feel comfortable with trying. Just try a lesson, just try an activity. Nothing was mandated, but it was encouraged to try things out, to see how they went in the classroom, and provide feedback, and get feedback from the students as well, and I think that was a critical component of it. When I would walk into classrooms to do observations, it was really great to see a lot of investigating history already happening just in that first year, because once someone, once a teacher started with an activity, the students really engaged with the material and with the lesson and with the idea that they got to think about history and that they were doing history rather than just having it be told to them. That engagement really encouraged others to start trying it as well and to including more lessons. So as a department, we've really worked hard over the last two years now to build real capacity around utilizing the units of instruction, so most in GRMAP, that kind of guides our practice, but we're not getting rid of some of the stuff that we had done before, right? So this is not a complete overhaul of our curriculum. What it is, is blending a lot of the investigating history components with inquiry pedagogy activities that we were already doing. So we're making sure that we're staying true to the concepts that we want. We want kids engaging, we want them to be questioning, we want them to be looking at resources, and so we're not just 100% doing everything that investigative history has laid out for us, we're doing some of the stuff that teachers are really passionate about and keeping, and we work on that together as a department. We also did Unit 2 this year as a department, and so next year, our goal is to kind of hone in on Units 3 and 4, and I think one of the classes has a Unit 5 as well. So it's a work in progress, but DSE has been great about actually making this available to everyone, doing pilot versions of it themselves, and gaining and garnering feedback from everyone who has been utilizing it. And there's opportunity for teachers to say, you know, if a link isn't working, they can put that information out there, DSE typically will fix that, and they work each summer to also refine the curriculum to make sure that it's reflective of the feedback that they're getting from the actual practical application of the curriculum in the classroom. So there are hundreds, if not thousands, of kids, or teachers who are actually implementing this curriculum across the state and have the opportunity to provide that feedback and enjoy history, like enjoy learning history. We want them to have fun, and we want them to be engaging with it. So just looking ahead, which is, you know, part of what we're trying to do here, this curriculum is moving down to grades 3 and 4. We're not in a situation yet where it's readily available. In fact, the pilot version of it isn't even released yet and won't be until the summer, and that's only the pilot version of the curriculum, so they're gonna be looking to release the version, a more complete curriculum the following summer, so summer of 2026. So we'll just start poking around, but with grades 3 and 4, clearly, we have a number of other issues and curriculum that we need to deal with, and so that will be a discussion about how we, how we proceed, what we'd like to do, what we'd like to move forward with. So that, that obviously takes more than just me having that conversation, since those wonderful teachers in grades 3 and 4 get to teach just about everything to those students. So we'll look forward to that. But I did include the links in the slideshow for you as well, if you wanted to learn more about investigating history. I think there's a lot of great resources available out there. So civics, just a friendly reminder, it is civics action project season, that's what we like to call it, cap season. And so that means that we have about 800 students in our school, so our eighth graders and our 11th graders, who are going to investigate topics of interest primarily in the local community, but also at the state and federal level as well. So we try to communicate this out to our community at large through town, to Town Hall, to the central administration, to let them know that students may be reaching out, because they're doing that research in order to gain access and information about what's going on in their community. So we appreciate anyone who does provide feedback, and I know that timing is, is a challenge, and we hope our teachers are working really hard, particularly at the eighth-grade level, to make sure that it's, students are focused on the same topic, that no one's getting 800 emails, that we're trying really hard to facilitate that communication piece. Students are also told that sometimes people are really busy because they have very important jobs, and they may not always get back to you, but we want students to learn how to communicate with adults, we want students to learn how to learn about their community, and so we feel that the research portion of this project is really, really essential. It's something that they need to do. So those are going to be presented in their classrooms. Students will be presenting them at the end of, usually like right at the end of the school year, so sometime around mid-June. Every student has the opportunity to present. We encourage our teachers to, and the students, to invite other teachers that may have helped them with the project, or other administrators, to come into those classroom presentations, too, because we want students to feel really comfortable presenting. They become, you know, mini-experts in their study, hopefully, so we want them to feel comfortable and confident, and the more they do something, the better they get at it. So being, having that opportunity to present is really important. I'm just gonna go back to civics, too, sorry, maybe? There we go. Just to give everyone the heads up, that on May 20th, our eighth grader's gonna be taking the civics MCAS exam. So there are two components, two parts to that civics MCAS exam. Last year, it was a pilot, and so we had our students taking it, but we didn't get much data or information from it. This year, all the students are gonna be taking it. We should get some more information, but it's still technically kind of a pilot, and, but we do hope to get some more information about the information and the learning that the students took away from the, from the course in eighth grade this year. The one portion of the exam is typical multiple choice, it's very similar setup to the English exam, so students will be very comfortable with the formatting of it. It is all online, and the second portion is a state task, state performance task, so there's a couple of components to that, where the students are looking at primary and secondary sources, and they're responding in paragraph form or in some of the, you know, Q and A that is typical on the English exam. So students will have an opportunity to really demonstrate what they know. They've all been told that it's gonna be on Topic 4, which is on the rights and responsibilities of a citizen, so that's essentially why we do this course in eighth grade, so that students can grasp that concept. So I'm hoping that we'll get some really good information from that about how our students are doing. They did release sample local tasks for each of the seven units of instruction in civics for the eighth-grade curriculum, so our, our teachers have had an opportunity to embed those practices. So students have been doing a lot of this practice all along throughout the school year, so they should be in good shape. So exploring careers at the high school, kind of shifting back up towards the high school. We've been working with Middlesex Community College for the last few years to really develop more of a clear path for students who are interested in exploring criminal and social justice beyond the high school. We have a very popular criminal justice course, and a lot of our students, regardless in grades 10 through 12, are, have, or will be taking that course, which is great, but we've also been able to forge some good partnerships with the Chelmsford Police Department as well, and some local attorneys that provide us, provide our students with real opportunities to kind of see how things happen outside of the high school. So just yesterday, our students walked across the field, and they spent a few hours over at the police department, got a tour of it, learned a bit about the practices and the daily experiences of those police officers and how to become a police officer. So there's also opportunities where the members of the department will come in and talk to the class as well, too. So we try to engage as much as possible. Middlesex Community College allows us to teach our criminal justice course at, for dual enrollment credit for students, and then we offer a variety of courses as well that allow them to move towards a degree in CJ. They wouldn't be able to finish at Chelmsford High School, but they certainly could move off and matriculate to MCC or another school, and be at another state school, and be able to carry those credits in. We think it's really important for the kids to not only learn kind of what they like, but what they don't like, too. So if a student goes in and takes that criminal justice course and says, "This isn't for me," that's okay. We, we would like them to figure out what they like and what they don't like as early as possible. I think that helps when they're making those decisions about what they're gonna do after high school. The Mass Bar Association, too, I just wanted to highlight that our mock trial, the attorneys that come in and have been helping out with our mock trial program. Every single year, Mr. Cole has a number of attorneys that he works with that provide feedback and mentoring for our, our students in that program, and it's, it's great. We really have one of the most supportive communities. Teachers in most of my electives have multiple community members coming in each year in order to present to the students, and I think this gives students a really great idea that they have the opportunity to see that connection between what they're learning in the classroom and how it might help them later on. And some more highlights, because this kind of links right to what we've just been talking about with our, with our programs, our mock trial, so I just want to highlight a few of our teams that are associated with the Social Science Department. So we have our mock trial program, they had another great, successful year. Like I said, Mr. Cole's really done a great job about inviting those individuals, and to support the students as they learn all about the courtroom. And I just wanted to give a shout-out, because we have a number of students who are working at, working with attorneys as part of their internship, the senior internship program, and I've been getting feedback from some of those attorneys, that judges are commenting when the students are in the courtroom, that they're so incredibly impressed with Chelmsford High School students, their etiquette, their courtroom decorum, it's just been, like that positive feedback wasn't even, no one was asking for it, and it was just being bestowed upon the students and being shared with the, the school community, too, so that, that's really great. I always love to hear that. The International Relations Club is pictured right there. They, at the Model UN competition at UMass Lowell just a few weeks ago, they took best delegation, which is an outstanding, outstanding award. We also had three individuals, or two students earned Outstanding Delegate Awards, and three students placed third in their respective roles. This is fantastic. Ms. Stoke, who's a member of our department, has also been working with that Model UN group, or the International Relations Group, for a while, and that's, that's their big event towards the end of the year. And our Speech and Debate team has had a really successful year, continues to be successful. Year after year, we've had, Ms. Sheehan from the English Department has been helping out, Mr. Zoop started helping out again, he took a little break, now I think he's kind of finding his way back into it, and then at the beginning of the year, I was helping out, too, because it really is a team effort to keep these kids going. The two individuals highlighted there are Clara Vascova and Sophia Roy, I'm sure you've heard their names before. Sophia is currently ranked seventh in the country in Speech and Debate, as of the last time I had a chance to look, and she just most recently placed first at the Mass State Speech and Debate League Tournament in both oratory and informative speaking, and I believe she might be the first student who came in first in two different, two different competitions. And Clara came in third in poetry and sixth in prose. I know Lana's been successful at some of the experiences, too, at some of the tournaments this year as well, so just giving a shout-out to all these students, and then their, their advisors as well, because it takes a significant amount of work. So looking ahead, I don't know if anyone knows, but it's a pretty exciting year, it's getting into our 250th. I'm pretty partial to that, being a bicentennial baby, so I, I know, I, yeah, yeah, it's, it's amazing. Good timing. So I did link in some resources, because I figured if this went out to the community, that the community would have the opportunity to check out some things, the Massachusetts 250 website. There are already plenty of events that are happening, certainly with the events in Lexington in April of 1775, now 2025. There's lots of exciting stuff that's gonna be planned throughout the summer, too, so I wanted to link that for the community, because I think it's important to enjoy these kind of unique opportunities that we have. This summer, I wanted to encourage people to link on the, take a tour of our historic sites. We actually have our third-grade classrooms do this in the classroom, so, so they have the opportunity, when they first come into third grade, they get to learn all about the town of Chelmsford, and the Historical Society had built this great website with some of the major images in historic sites in Chelmsford, and so we actually use that in the classroom. But if families want to do that, too, that would be fantastic, and then have an opportunity to walk around our historic district. That would be great, it'd be so fun. And then the kids coming into third grade would really have that opportunity to connect, and, you know, they could do this multiple times, you could do it any year, it doesn't have to be third grade. I linked in the Chelmsford Historical Society, too, we started reaching out to them to see if we could do some planning and some activities and professional development potentially with the Historical Society, so we've started working on that. They put me in touch with some individuals that I think will have some good, good activities to do with. And I just wanted to also give a shout-out to Debbie Taverna at the Garrison House. Every year, she has, since the curriculum changed, we moved the town of Chelmsford to third grade, and so she's been hosting our students in third grade, all volunteer, all her work, all her time, it's just absolutely amazing. Our students get to go there in, in the fall, they have a chance to walk through the Garrison House and the buildings and the barn and learn all about it. The kids are so inquisitive, they really enjoy it, and then in the spring, she does this for a lot of other schools as well, but she does this all volunteer for the town of Chelmsford, and I think that's a tremendous gift that we have. So when the Garrison House is open, I would encourage people to go and check it out, you know, take advantage of what you have in your community. It's really important to do that. The last slide here that I have is talking about how I want to encourage our fourth-grade families to take advantage of this Parks Program, so students who complete their fourth-grade year have the opportunity to get a free National Park Pass for their family. This is a program that's been going on for a long time, and I've had it posted on our website. In fact, we, my family took advantage of it probably eight years ago now, and it was one of the most fun summers that we ever had, driving across country and hitting 13 national parks in a tiny little camper. Maybe don't do that, but I would definitely encourage you, I did mark all the local areas, the Massachusetts, New England, New Hampshire, and Maine areas that you could go visit for free, and, and click on that link, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to sign up, it'll tell you exactly how to do it, and what to do with the, what to do with the pass and where to present it, but your entire, like, family in your car should be able to get into it, those national parks are free, and it's awesome. What a great place. We have so much history here, and I really want students and families and our community to take advantage of it as much as possible. So that concludes my presentation, looking at the past, what we're doing right now, and in the future, and I included all my contact information if anybody has any additional questions.
Anybody have any questions?
More kind of a response rather than questions. First of all, I, when my son was in fourth grade, we totally did the Every Kid Outdoors program, and strongly recommended, actually, third-grade parents should know that, starting September of when your child, September 1st, so when your child enters fourth grade, you're eligible to apply for it, so it doesn't have to wait till summer, and we did a long April break trip to the National Parks in the Southwest using it, so. But I was just going to say, I really appreciated this overview, I was really excited to see that Chelmsford has been using the investigating history curriculum through my day job. I've gotten a chance to partner with DSE and get a lot of insight into what's happening in classrooms across Massachusetts with investigating history, and I've been really excited seeing the great, like, inquiry-based work that that includes, so I'm thrilled that that's being integrated into our programming, and I have heard good things from people doing the third and fourth-grade pilots in some towns, so I'm excited to see what comes out of that and what pieces might be integrated into the curriculum here in town. So, yeah, clearly, there's a lot happening, and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
I just want to say quickly, this is an incredible program, there's so much to it, and I just want to focus on one thing, two things, actually. I love that we're working within the 250th, I think that's really interesting, and there's a lot of history in Chelmsford, I think most, even a lot of residents don't understand how historic this town really is, and I am really pleased to see that you're teaching people about their rights. I think it is a really timely point in our history to, for kids to be learning that, and, and at this age is really especially, so I just want to say thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Anybody have other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. So next up, as we transition, we have Dr. Dania Mahoney, she is our new World Language Department Coordinator and Cultural Exchange. Thank you, we're very happy that she's here, very happy that she's here, this is her debut presentation, so go easy on her, okay?
Thank you so much for having me. So I, as Dr. Hirsch mentioned, I am the World Language Coordinator, World Language and Cultural Exchange Coordinator for the Chelmsford This year. This is a perfect time of year because we are now at the point where we are seeing successes and awards and recognitions. So the first thing I want to talk about is the Massachusetts Seal of Bilinguacy. The state seal of bilinguacy has been around since 2017. And Chelmsford has been consistent in supporting this, this wonderful opportunity for our students that highlights student language success and home, home language success. The three main awards that we offer for the state seal of bilinguacy are the Language Opportunity Coalition Achievement Award, which is awarded to students who've earned and demonstrated an intermediate, mid, or above proficiency in their language, as well as a high enough score on the ELAMCAS. The Massachusetts Seal of Bilinguacy, which is an intermediate high on proficiency testing, as well as 472 or higher on ELAMCAS. And then the Seal with Distinction, which is an advanced low proficiency. And the thing to note with the Seal with Distinction is that that is essentially demonstrating that students have functional language skills at a professional level. They can use their language in the workplace. And we have several students earning that. With that in mind, this year we tested 70 students using the stamp test, which is a specific proficiency test. Proficiency tests aren't a pass fail. They just measure what a student can do. So a student could take a proficiency test every single year if they were so inclined, and they would see growth over time. And so the nice thing with proficiency models is that you can say, okay, well, I see that I am good at, I'm very good at this skill, but I need to develop more sentence structure, or I need to start building up to paragraphs, or start using more past and present and future tenses. So there's a clear sequence in language acquisition. And we can show our students where they are at, so they start to own their own language learning. We administered over 70 stamp, stamp tests this year. Six students were testing in more than one language, which tells us that they're bringing their home languages with them to Chelmsford Public Schools. We tested in 10 languages this year, and students in both grades 11 and 12 tested. Additional students qualify for any of the three awards through AP testing, although most of our students don't take AP tests until this week, next week for languages. So we don't get the scores until after graduation. These awards are eligible to be awarded retroactively. So when the AP scores come out in July, I'll be looking and awarding this, these recognitions retroactively, which is a great benefit for students, especially as they start to look further in the future. It's not just about college acceptances, but it could be any kind of career acceptance afterwards, or future study after an undergraduate experience. Proficiency, keep using that word proficiency. What is that? It's about what students can do with language. So it's very functional. It's about using language in context. As I mentioned, Chelmsford has been involved with the Seal of Bilinguacy for a number of years. So just to give the context, over the past several years, we've had, last year, 68 students testing with 26 awards. This year, we have 70 students testing. And actually, the number of awards has gone up. It's more than 25 now. Our scores are coming in a little bit piecemeal right now because we're waiting, each domain comes in a little bit more slowly. So I think we're up to 26 or 27 awards for this year. And what's exciting is that next year, you're going to see, we already have, let me see, 21 students have already earned some of the awards for next year's graduating class. So that means that we will, if we have students testing next year as seniors, we will have a larger number of award winners than we do this year. This year, the languages represented by our Chelmsford High School students include American Sign Language, Arabic, French, Hindi, Kannada, Mandarin, Mandarin, Portuguese, Spanish, Telugu, and Vietnamese. And there were other expressed interests in language that we just didn't move forward with this year, but we can certainly pursue in the future. This year, class of 2025, and I think you'll hear more about this later, we have, now we are up to, oh, let me double check my numbers. We have 13 Language Opportunity Coalition Achievement Awards. We have 11 students earning the Seal of Bilinguacy and three, the Seal with Distinction, which is very exciting. And for the class of 2026, we've already got five students for the Language Opportunity Coalition Achievement Award, 12 for the Seal of Bilinguacy, and four with the Seal with Distinction. One thing to know about the Seal and the Seal with Distinction is that most Massachusetts state colleges and community colleges offer up to 12 credits for students who earn the Seal of Bilinguacy. So they come in with 12 credits to use towards their future degree, and 16 credits for the Seal with Distinction, which is an amazing pre-college opportunity to set themselves up really strongly for the future. For example, if a student were interested in studying international relations, they could come in with 16 credits and already advance past some of the basic classes at a state school. So that's a really powerful motivation and encouragement for our students. So what is proficiency, I mentioned this before, is learning to use a language. It's a focus on what students can do with language. And where that's important for us and our families, our community, is to know that students should expect to be using language up to 90% of the time in their classes. And that's something that we look for when we go into our teachers' classrooms, is teachers using language and students using language all the time. We have lots of resources that are comprehensible. And that means that language is at a level that students are at, and maybe a little bit higher than their current demand or their current expectation. We don't expect them to be reading native sources from day one, but we expect to have sources that they can start to engage with and build with and grow with, and then lots and lots of language input. So that's why it's so important to have such highly qualified teachers in our department, which we're fortunate to have. As part of that, there's been, the district has been generous with providing us with some really strong resources that can support that comprehensible input with, with a textbook that's really benefiting us with lots of video, audio and video resources, things that are recorded at, by native speakers for students to grow at that proficiency level. Lots of novels and resources that students can add to their, so we can build up reading skills. And paper books, so that students are not just on their laptops, but reading books at their level on paper. And then as part of our resource, we have an app that's built into the textbook series called Nualaang, which is similar in some ways to what Duolingo we used to be, right? But it allows our students to develop the skills in the scope and sequence of our textbook, by using a lot of apps and games that can help support their language learning. All of our teachers are working to implement proficiency models. It's a work in progress. This is not an overnight process. But each teacher is moving towards the goals of increasing the amount of language and proficiency in our classes. One exciting, so my, my lovely, my job title is World Language and Cultural Exchange Coordinator. And so I have to proudly say that we have just completed several wonderful cultural exchange opportunities under the leadership of some of the teachers, both at Chelmsford High School and at McCarthy Middle School. In the fall, in October of last year, we had guests from La Rochelle, France, who visited us for a week exchange, a week-long exchange. We had 14 students, and they visited a number of tourist sites, visited our schools, learned a lot about Massachusetts, the history that Ms. Quinn was just mentioning. We also were fortunate to be at the establishment on the night that we had that amazing solar Northern Lights display. And the students were so excited to see that, which is why I had to include that in our picture. Subsequently, our own students traveled to Lys, France, over April vacation, where they had an immersion experience studying French and visiting sites there. At the same time, we had a Panama and Costa Rica trip with 35 students traveling to both Panama and Costa Rica, having adventures. I couldn't pick which sloth picture was the best. But everyone who shared pictures with me shared pictures of, of the sloths, including one that was just hanging out outside the hotel door. Yeah. Yeah, that's my, my big regret in not going to Panama and Costa Rica is missing out on seeing a sloth outside my hotel door. But wonderful opportunities for the students and our chaperones to experience the culture and the envi, the ecological, the rainforests and the environment in Panama and Costa Rica. You can see the rainforests. They did some whitewater rafting, zipline tours, all sorts of wonderful opportunities there. And then just this past weekend, and these pictures had to be shared with you before they got much further than the border, but the Quebec, the eighth grade French trip to Quebec had 35 students traveling to Quebec City. So I don't have all the fun and exciting pictures because they hadn't happened yet. But now I could share them with you for next year. And that was a wonderful opportunity. I've gotten wonderful feedback about such truly informative Quebecois tour guide who really knew so much and provided our students with opportunities that some of our chaperones had never been able to do before. So that's an exciting addition to that. We have also had the opportunity to have representatives from CIEE, which is a global internet, nonprofit study abroad organization that has spoke, they've spoken with our students, some of our students and most of our teachers about language opportunities that are for individual students. And we have three students who have been selected to travel this summer and have been awarded some scholarship money to travel to have language opportunity experiences, which is really exciting. CIEE provides a substantial amount of scholarship to students looking to travel. And as more students from Chelmsford engage, we'll have more opportunities in the future. So that's a really great possibility so that students are not just traveling with school trips, but sometimes will have choices with other languages. So for example, if we have a student who's interested in Mandarin, they might be able to travel to Taiwan or to China to work on their Mandarin and study in a home language, or to gain skills in a language that they've never had before that we can't offer as a district. So that's an exciting addition. This coming June, we'll be having a panel of interpreters coming for our American Sign Language. I think we sometimes focus on our international travel and our cultural opportunities for our spoken languages. But ASL, the deaf community is a vibrant and really complex community. And so our ASL students are going to have interpreters come in, learning about deaf culture and a presentation on what they can do with future ASL study. Along the same lines, I mentioned that we did stamp testing. This past Friday, we had 30 students in ASL testing in stamp, which is a remarkable thing to, to observe. Well, 30 people are signing at the same time in silence. It is, for those of us who've proctored tests for many years, and you hear the noises and hums and hems and haws and all of that, and none of that happens when you have 30 students signing at the same time lining the hallways of our Performing Arts Center, so that they have enough space to do the signing. It was really remarkable. So I'm looking forward to hearing how our students did, including, and one of our students this year, who's earning the Seal of Bilinguacy with distinction, is earning that in ASL. So that says quite a bit about the success of Ms. Fitzgibbons and her ASL program, because she's really made that come to life. In the spring, we were, several of our department members participated by hosting Fulbright visiting scholars as, in partnership with UMass Lowell. Specifically in our classrooms, we had teachers from Ukraine, Argentina, Turkey, and Malawi. That was a wonderful opportunity that was repeated over several weeks. So the students got to know the teachers, and the teachers got to know our school and our students. In December, February, winter, over winter this year, we hosted Le Concorde Oratoire, which was in partnership with le Club Richelieu of Lowell. Forgive me, my French accent's not great. But the Chelmsford High School hosted students in this public speaking event. With students from Chelmsford, Tuxbury and Westford, and the winner from Westford Academy advanced to the regional competition in Nashua, New Hampshire. And we now have World Language Honor Societies in all three of our languages. So we have students, last year, we only inducted students in Spanish and French. This year, we are inducting students in all three languages. 83 students have been invited to apply. And the applications came in over the weekend, so I'm sure we'll have numbers for that very soon. Students must have a 90% or higher in three consecutive years of the same language. So that's, puts a lot of pressure on students. Students have to work really hard to achieve that level of language success in their classes. The World Language Honor Society participates in community service events, such as raising money for communities programs, or, as well as supporting participation of their, of the, in the World Language Honor Society itself to help pay for dues and so on. They have had monthly meetings to plan, plan events. And they have made videos to inform the middle school students, specifically the students, oh, my computer, the screen. There we go. There we go. Videos to inform particularly the Parker Middle School students who are going to be choosing their language for the very first time this year. They, helps to inform them on what to expect in language learning and what they might want to think about as they make that choice. And what's next for our department? We are going to continue promoting the Seal of Bilinguacy. This year, as part of, in my role as World Language Coordinator, I've been participating in Desi workshops and a World Language Advisory Team, where we analyze some of the data from a number of districts. And I'm hoping to be able to convert that work with the data and with Desi to support accessing some grant money to further, provide further access to World Language students participating in the Seal of Bilinguacy and taking the stamp test. We have students enrolling for an exchange trip to Spain for April of next year. We're going to be continuing to implement our, our resources to build proficiency into our language classrooms, including more comprehensible novels and more access to proficiency resources through our textbook. And then we'll be, over time, I've been working on updating the website, which is a work in progress, of course. But as we do that, you'll be seeing that there will be updates to curriculum apps and the scope and sequences of our source, of our courses as we develop our, develop those materials in coalition with the use of our new textbooks. So, so thank you very much for having me. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Thanks for a great overview. And I, I would love to know a little bit more about the move towards kind of a proficiency-based approach. And I'm curious if that is used in placement for students, because I know there may be some students with, who come into our schools with some level of proficiency in Spanish or French, or I guess potentially even ASL. And, you know, how it's used at that incoming level. I know you talked about it being used as we look at the acquisition of the skills and look at the seals of bilinguacy and things like that, but.
So the stamp test itself is, is a fairly lengthy exam. So there are districts that I know that use the stamp test, for example, in eighth grade to ensure proper placement going into ninth grade and at the high school level. That's really, with so much testing happening and the eighth grade level, that's not really the most ideal spot I, in my mind. But there are a number of students, in fact, for scheduling for next year, we had a handful of students who asked to essentially do a proficiency test. And so we would use a kind of open question. The prompts are often very general. And then it's what students can do with that prompt. And that has encouraged a few students to be placed at a level that's more suitable to their experience, whether they've had a number of years of language from another district, whether they're coming in with language skills from home language. Most of the time, we don't, since we only offer, only, offer French, Spanish, and ASL, we don't have as many students placing out or moving into different levels with proficiency. proficiency models. If we had, if we offered far more languages, which I can't imagine how we could figure out, but Hindi, for example, there are a number of students with a broad range of skills there, Portuguese as well. Those are the kinds of things, if they're bringing their home language, that proficiency task could really give us a lot more information. But yes, we are using, uh, proficiency type questions. Imagine a question like, um, what is something that you can do to help out around the house? A very basic response would be, you know, a very novice response, but you could expand on that at quite length, at quite a bit of length, um, depending on how you could use language. And so that one prompt could be used for any level of student to understand where they're at with language.
Thank you. I have, I have one more question and it is, um, you mentioned, as I would have inferred that, you know, we, we aren't necessarily able to teach beyond a few languages within our district just based on numbers and budget and everything else. Have we ever looked, I, I know you're sort of new to the department, but in your knowledge, have we ever looked at online courses or other sort of competency-based courses for students who would like to pursue a language that is not currently offered by the district itself?
So I can't really speak to the history on that, um, but I can say in my experience, a lot of those online programs are, uh, only really as effective as a student's personal motivation, ex- as, as a student's own personal motivation. I would be concerned that offering something like that where there isn't that one-to-one, that connection with a teacher, with connection with peers, language learning is inherently social. So a lot of those programs, you might learn a lot of vocabulary, you might learn a few essential skills, but unless you're truly motivated to look for community and connection, um, with other learners of that language, it's really difficult to have success. And when I've had students who've needed to do that for a variety of reasons, it's been a very difficult task, um, to take on an online language program and be successful with real language learning. That's a real difference between proficiency and kind of, for those of us who maybe took languages a few years ago. The older models were very much about memorizing a lot of words. You'd memorize phrases, you'd conjugate verbs, and you could be successful, but you couldn't necessarily use language. You might be able to conjugate a verb seven different ways, but you may not be able to order in a restaurant. And so the shift here is to make it much more practical and usable, which is an important skill for language acquisition. But that's not as effective with some of those online.
Yeah, no, I definitely, I, having experienced learning a language through like Babbel, I get it, it, it's not as comprehensive or effective. I was thinking more of, I've heard of some districts partnering with like virtual high schools where there are interactive online courses taught by educators, and I didn't know if that is something we had ever looked at.
I, I was just jumping in here because I've had the experience with it. We do have an online platform called Agenuity, it's through Imagine Learning. And, um, one of the couple of things you have with it is that there's no, you need somebody on the other end to be doing the speaking and listening piece, so the students can go and do that, but they would need to be an educator on the other end. The other thing about those programs is yes, you can pay for them to have an educator on the other end, but they're quite expensive.
Really?
It's a per student price.
Got it.
So for us to have that, it's almost, um, more expensive than the cost of our teachers.
Okay, okay, so never mind on that. I'm just curious because I have heard of it and I was curious if that's something we looked at.
John, you had something to add?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, first, um, I had just a quick question for you guys. When did we bring in ASL? We didn't always have it.
About four, five years ago.
Four, five years ago.
One, two, three, this is our fifth year.
Fifth year? I want to say, so I was around before that and I remember the experience of parents that wanted ASL and they really, really came out and they advocated for it. And, um, just looking at the numbers of people that are using ASL as a, as a, as a, as a platform to be able to get this literacy, I think is incredible. I think there's a little bit of probably motive, I mean, they probably could have been proficient before, but now they have something that says it, which is motivating for colleges and it's a piece of paper that is important. Uh, and it's something you really have to work hard to get. And there's so many good things in the presentation, but I'm going to focus on that and just say that the numbers look amazing, the, the number of people that are enrolling and going through this process and testing is amazing, and I'm really glad to see that ASL support really take off. That's a really big deal for a lot of people. Thank you.
It's a very exciting program. We have a lot of students who are very motivated to do it. The thing that is worth noting is that, um, there is a, a very well-known like learning curve with languages. Most of our students who are testing in, uh, spoken languages, uh, whether it's French or Spanish or their home languages, have had several, several more years of language. ASL is a harder language to learn, it's a more complex language, um, and the grammar and culture is really different. So students who can earn the Seal of Bilinguality in ASL after only three years of instruction, that's a really remarkable thing to note. Whereas most of our students earning the seal in French and Spanish have had four, five, six years of language and in home languages, um, they've perhaps been speaking or learning that language their whole life. So it's really, uh, some, an impressive thing.
And I just wanted to say one more thing. When you said they were testing and it's dead silent in a room, I would, I would literally just be like, all these people hate me because nobody's talking. So it would play off all, all of my insecurities. Nobody's talking to me. So, uh, thank you for.
Susan and Maria.
Just a quick question. So what grade does the language start? Is it seventh or eighth?
So we start French and Spanish in seventh grade, and that's why our students will be choosing at the end of their sixth grade year. And then students have the opportunity again at the high school to either switch languages or add a, or take ASL in place of French or Spanish.
Okay, so they would start with French or Spanish, but then if they want to ASL, lots to switch later.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'm really glad they have ASL. I've taken lots and lots and lots of community college courses, but I would have given anything to have learned it earlier in high school.
So good, I love it.
Couple of things. One, it was really interesting to see that now you also have to have a certain score on the, um, ELAM cast.
So the, so the Seal of Bilinguality has always required the ELAM cast.
Oh, good.
And so even though it's going away as a graduation requirement, it's not going away. And that's a super important thing that our students and community members need to know, that the MCAS, the ELAM cast provides a lot of data to the district, it gives a lot of information about how our students are doing. But also it's a criteria for things such as the Seal of Bilinguality, such as the add-on scholarships to the Massachusetts, uh, to UMass schools. So MCAS carries with it more than just the graduation requirement. And that's, that's always been part of the Seal of Bilinguality.
I'm really glad to see that because I really think it is important. I mean, English is my second language, not my first. And I think it's really great that you have to be proficient, not only in that second language, but also in your first language or vice versa.
Exactly, and that's an essential piece of the Seal of Bilinguality.
The, another question for you. Have we ever explored doing some kind of exchange program for A- ASL? Is there such a thing?
So we don't have an exchange, but we are working, uh, it's probably at least a year or two down the road of doing some cultural trips. There is a, there's New York Deaf Theater, so I've been looking into doing opportunities there. And also of, I would like to coordinate with Ms. Fitzgibbons to coordinate an ASL trip to, uh, Gallaudet University so that students could be fully immersed in the language program there. Things like going to a Starbucks where there, there are no speaking people.
Yeah.
It's a pretty powerful experience for our ASL students.
So that brings me to my, what, comment on the overall programs that you presented on, which is, I am so happy to see culture be central and key to your language program, to our language programs here. Because I think going forward, it's going to be very easy to just get an AI interpreter, but you cannot get an interpreter that understands the culture. It is just key. So thank you. I was really, really happy to see that.
Thank you.
Two of my sons happen to have gone to RIT, where National Technical Institute for the Deaf partners with them. And all four years there where they are, everything at that school incorporated ASL and deaf culture into it. And all the stores and restaurants had a lot of people employed who used ASL. So it was, I mean, that's another opportunity for kids to go to a campus like that where it's deeply embedded in the campus.
Exactly. So those are, those are things that we're looking at so that all of our languages, all of our students have opportunities to explore their cultures.
Anybody else? Great, well, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
First presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's kind of you.
Oh, okay, I guess I'm just going to keep talking tonight, uh, because that's really what I do best. Um, I'm just following up. I'm just going to piggyback on, um, Dr. Mahoney's presentation just last year at this time. She just happened to be here to present because she wasn't here last year, you had me. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we had a chance to just recognize the students that are receiving the Seal of Bilinguality for the class of 2025. I don't know if any new students for the class of 2025 should be on this list because these tests are coming in. So if there is a missing name, we will obviously add it to our major list, but I thought it would be important to see that, um, who is receiving the Seal of Bilinguality recipients actually receiving those, uh, that seal in. So this is our regular Seal of Bilinguality Award recipients, which is great. So they have the one, two, three, four, five languages that you'll see. For the distinction, as Dr. Mahoney said, there was three students, um, and three of them are, one is in ASL, one's in Spanish, and one in Vietnamese. And lastly, these are the students that are receiving the Massachusetts Language Opportunity College Award. So very, very proud of all of them. Congratulations to the class of 2025. You'll see them, um, at graduation. We'll have everything on to their diplomas and we're just, you know, very happy for these students. This is something that they can.
You know, what is Kanada? What is that language of?
I'm going to defer to, uh, Dr. Mahoney. Do you know anything about this language? Because I'm not, I'm kind of giving up my role as.
Well, ideally, yeah, okay.
But that's why I have her here, she's an expert.
Um, the Kanada and Talugu are, uh, two languages from India.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. That was great. Okay, uh, next thing is just, um, update on the.
I'm going to give you a, a quick update on the Parker Middle School, uh, building and kind of where we're at. Let me just switch over my, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
So if you remember from last week, kind of did a quick update. So this is sort of the presentation that we, part of the.
Yeah, I even.
Yeah, we got a, um, building committee. I just kind of, really the timeline thing is, you know.
I'll just get on, uh, a couple of quick things. So, um, you have thirteen member, uh, school building committee member, um, panel is, is up there. Good representation from the town, from the schools, um, community members covering a lot of different facets, um, that are going to kind of guide and oversee the, um, the work. It's a group that's going to begin to meet, um, monthly, um, here. We did decide that all of our meetings are going to be televised, so community members, if they can't, uh, come, they certainly can, um, watch a meeting to follow up. And it's going to be a good record of all of the different actions that have actually transpired. So the first, uh, piece of the work, uh, when we're getting into the feasibility, uh, study was to bring an Onus Project Manager or an OPM on board. We had solicited for an OPM. We received twelve proposals from very qualified firms. We, um, shortlisted and invited four of those firms in for interviews. And ultimately, after the interviews, uh, the interview committee recommended to the full committee going with Leftfield. Leftfield is the name of the, um, Onus Project Manager firm. That was approved by the full school building committee. And so that paperwork was then, uh, sent down to the Mass School Building Authority of the MSBA. So the next step in the process is next Monday at two o'clock, we have what's called an OPM Panel Review Meeting. So, um, representatives from the district, the town, and Leftfield, um, will be on one of the OPM Panel Meeting agendas to talk a little bit about our project, their approach, answer some questions the OPM Panel Members may have. And it's anticipated then that the MSBA will approve, um, Leftfield being our OPM. And within a day or two of that meeting, they'll send us a letter to that effect, which then allows the town to sign off on the contract with, um, Leftfield, and then the work commences. So this should actually go pretty quickly. Uh, the contract has already been, it's a standard contract document, it's already been vetted, approved, and signed by Leftfield. So it's with Manager Cohen at this point. Once we get the letter from the MSBA, again, we're anticipating midweek, we will sign that. And then shift into the next most important, um, aspect of the work, which is selecting a designer or someone who is actually going to be kind of the architectural firm to put the school, uh, plans together. So this is a little bit of a different process. Leftfield at this point will step in and kind of manage the day-to-day functions of the project for the town and the schools with us giving them advice along the way. But they are, uh, preparing the request for services of the RFS document to bring on a designer. So, uh, once again, contracts are signed or whatnot. We will issue the request for services for design firms who may be interested. But instead of a local panel like us actually reviewing the proposals and making a selection, this is a project, uh, process that's much more, uh, MSBA-controlled. So the MSBA actually has a thirteen-member, um, designer selection panel. The district, which is the town and the schools, get to put three members on that, uh, panel for the discussion. And then a minimum of nine total members is required for a quorum. So, uh, myself, uh, Mr. King and, uh, Mr. Cohen will be the three members representing the town and the schools on this panel. And we'll be having at least six, if not the full complement of the thirteen, uh, folks from the MSBA looking at all of the different proposals and ultimately shortlisting, you know, one, two, or three firms to come before that panel for review and interview. And then ultimately, we'll be selecting, um, with this particular group, the designer for the project. And then that will come back to the, um, school building committee for the Parker School. We'll let the, uh, school committee know about it, the town know about it, we'll execute contracts, and then we'll be on our, um, way. This is just a composition of the thirteen members from the MSBA. They're a combination of, you know, uh, MSBA staff and different industry, uh, professionals and their various, um, traits. If all goes well, we will likely be slated for either July twenty-ninth, August twelfth, or August twenty-sixth to bring, uh, that'll be the designer selection panel meeting dates that we'll have to go forward. We're minimally going to have to go forward at two of those dates. So the first date when we get together, we'll be reviewing all the applications and kind of shortlisting. And then we'll be inviting the groups to come in and make a presentation at that follow-up meeting. But the hope at this point is to by the end of the summer, have the designer on board. So when we hit the ground running for the start of the school year, right in September after Labor Day, we're really looking at the three different options that we have before us. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the three options are to build, um, again, you have to look at different options, but one of them would be just a two-grade level school, continuing the grade five, six model that we currently have. A sectional option would be to add a grade level, so to pull the elementary grade level four up into this new building and have a grade four, five, six configuration. Or the third option would be, um, to merge McCarthy and Parker back together in a new building and have it be five, six, seven, eight, um, all four grade levels. The second two options, the four, five, six, or the five, six, seven, eight, help the district with regard to our enrollment concerns because it's providing some extra swing space and classroom space, particularly at the elementary grade levels. So we're trying to do the very most we can with one project to accomplish a lot of, uh, tasks. But those are the three options we're going to look at. And, uh, this slide is just to, um, as much as we've been putting a ton of time and effort into this, we're still very much at the beginning. So we're still only halfway through Module Two, uh, which is, uh, kind of darkened up there on the screen, forming the project team. You know, we know locally who's going to be involved. We now have the OPM as of Monday, hopefully will be on board. We'll get the designer on board by the end of the summer, and then we'll be switching into Module Three, which is the feasibility study. And that's when a lot of the work is going to begin at the school level with, uh, staff and parents and community members to talk about the three different options, what we'd like to see in our education program, what we like about what we're currently offering at the middle school level, or we might like to tweak or amend in a new building project. So, um, that's when all of this will begin. This is a very high-level, uh, timeline that basically, again, shows us on the very left side of the screen where you are here. And this is basically going to be a five-year, uh, project with, uh, if everything goes well and according to plan, we have all these different milestones, but we'd be potentially looking at a new building project, um, being completed during the spring of, uh, spring and summer of 2030. So again, about five years out from where we are. Just shorter, because we're going to have to break this up into chunks to really kind of manage some of this work. This screen, uh, tries to do that a little bit. And it's just going to look between now and, uh, the holidays, so now in the end of the, the calendar year. Again, OPM is on board, designer will be on board by the end of the summer, and then we have to, uh, provide some preliminary design program, um, to the DESI. So we have to give them our different options and let them know what we're really interested in looking at. At the very bottom of your screen, DESI, uh, not DESI, MSBA requires you to actually look at just a code upgrade to each of the buildings. It makes you look at what an addition or renovation of the current space is, and it makes you look at a new school. So we're going to have to look at all of these different options. And then hopefully by the, um, again, the end of the calendar year, the end of, um, December of twenty-five, start to narrow this scope down so that when we hit, um, January of twenty-six, we've really identified the one of the three options that we want to look at, either the five, six, the four, five, six, or the five to eight. We have to, again, kind of more fully blow out a mini schematic design of what the code upgrade would be, what the ad revenue would be, and what a new building project would be to make sure that we're actually making. to make sure that we're actually making, you know, financially sound decisions and the programs that we're putting forward are all in alignment. So that by the end of that calendar year, the end of December of 26, we actually have the schematic design of the selection that we want to move forward with completed into the MSBA. And then obviously, from there, we would have to come back to the town, get different approvals and look at about a year's work before we can actually go out to bid to start around the spring of 27 with construction on the building, which would then, I'm sorry, 28, the spring of 28. And then three years later, in the spring, summer of 2030 is when the new building would be ready. So that's just kind of a quick high level for individuals who maybe didn't watch the school building committee. I would highly recommend when you have some downtime to just watch those videos. I think you'd find it interesting. You can definitely kind of keep in the loop as to what's happening. I'll continue to break it down periodically at school committee meetings to just kind of keep it fresh. But we're in a good shape, we're actually on target, OPM onboard, designer by the end of the summer. Work just set heavily once the school year begins.
Great work, great work by the subcommittee too. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dennis.
And how does that now involve Joanna's role more? What's the impact? Do you get involved as the business and finance director in this whole process?
Yes, I'm part of the committee, the.
And you're so happy.
I am, it's an exciting project. And a lot of people don't get to participate even in their whole career to do that. So it's exciting. And then I'll get more involved with if they need some help in procurement. And then also with the reimbursement rate, you know, making sure we submit everything to the town nice and neatly for them to pay and then for the town to get reimbursed. So I think those are my three main areas.
And this is something that's doable with the current staff we have and so on in that office?
Yeah, it's a lot of work. I don't want to downplay it at all. I mean, it's a lot of work for anyone who's involved with the process because as, we're not even fully into it yet. But as you get into it, you know, it's a daily at some levels, interactions with the OPM. The OPM's role is to basically be kind of like the day to day eyes and ears and kind of work on the project. But we have to give kind of advice and feedback because ultimately they're only as good as the information that they have to work with. So we have to kind of be on top of this. But no, I'll obviously be very involved in this. Joanna will, because again, we want this to be functional for the schools and for the town. Reimbursements are going to be key, making sure, because this is big money. So we need to make sure that, you know, when we're expending money, we're getting reimbursed timely. The MSBA can be tricky to work with as far as making sure you have all your documentation in order. You know, we have some experience doing that. So I think that's certainly going to help on the town side. We're going to have to integrate with and coordinate with, you know, Christine Clancy and DPW, as well as Darlene, the town accountant is going to have to help with the processing. We'll have a separate call with the OPM. Leftfield to kind of talk about, they, it's called ProPay is the whole process and accounting system that we use with the MSBA. So we'll all get on board with that. It is going to be a lot of work, I think it's manageable. It's very interesting and I personally find fun work to be doing when you're doing a school construction project. So I'm looking forward to it, you know, I do enjoy doing it, but it's going to be a lot to juggle.
And one more, that's, I mean, looking at this 2030, it's amazing. I mean, it is still quite a few years to go here before we actually have a welcome into the new building ceremony going on. So of course, I am more and more worried. And I don't know how everybody else is thinking about, what they're, you're thinking about this. But this big project in Princeton that all comes live into occupancies very likely in 2025 from the schedule that we got. So if, is, what committee, what group, what part of our strategic plan and so on is working on possibilities of how we're going to incorporate these number of students into our elementary and middle schools? I know the high school has room.
Right, I think the, we're all a little nervous, not know exactly what the numbers are falling. I think we do have to wait a little bit to figure out exactly how many children or students, you know, will be actually residing in the development. I forwarded an email that indicated that they're basically going to start to bring people in in three different phases. The first phase is actually this spring timeframe, bless you, when a section of the housing is going to be available. And then I believe it's July and it's August. But they should be fully, you know, leasing those properties by the end of the summer, early fall at the latest. We're watching closely because we know the address to see if people end up coming to us to enroll their children. But we don't know if it's going to be a particular, no, 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 we don't know how many kids would necessarily be coming. We only have the projections that were done originally with the project. We don't have any way of guessing or knowing what grade levels kids may be in when they get there. So, you know, if we ended up getting, let's just say, 20 kids, you know, yeah, we'd have a problem if they were all 20 second grade kids that were all going to go to one building. But if it was 20 kids and it was a couple here and a couple of this grade level, a couple of this grade level, it may not have as big of an impact on us. I think at this point, we just have to kind of watch to see what's actually happening with the enrollment. You know, again, I, we could, we have capacity at the high school, that's not a significant issue. You know, if we're talking a dozen or, you know, a couple dozen elementary aged children, but they're actually spread through different grade levels, then, you know, I think Harrington can accommodate that. The middle school Parker is going to be tight. Parker is going to be the tightest next year. The fifth grade is actually their biggest class, so there's obviously not a lot of room there. Seventh and eighth grade at McCarthy have a little bit more room because of the way we're doing the scheduling now and the five sections. So the head counts are down a little bit per, per room. So we have capacity there, but we really just have to see where the kids come from. We would have to react quickly if something ever happened. I'll keep this group informed as, you know, enrollment begins or if we're seeing numbers come from that development. I think we would want to try to manage it within our existing construct for the time being. If we ever again did see, say at the elementary level, that they were just a tremendous amount of kids coming in at particular grade levels, we'd have to quickly make the decision about enrollment. And do we consider, I'd mentioned previously, do we consider maybe enrolling a particular address just at a different elementary school? Because again, South Row has capacity. So, you know, would we think about maybe doing, doing that? But I really just have to get a sense of where the numbers are going to come from and how many, and to see how manageable it's going to be just on our own, or if we're going to need to make that kind of a decision. But I will watch it, I'll report back to you as the spring progresses. And we'll, we'll make some decisions on the fly if we need to.
So is that kind of decision something that, I mean, ideally, you would want that kind of decision to happen before a school year starts? But say it was the end of October and we realized the numbers were just too high for a school like Harrington to accommodate. Is that something at that point in the school year, we could make that change for reassigning a school to a different?
Well, no, I mean, once, once we.
When the year started?
No, no, once we assign a child to a school, we would keep them at that school.
Yeah, but I mean, that address, but would maybe some subsequent kids then end up going, even if you kept it?
The way they're doing this, I mean, again, none of this is perfect. But the way they're doing this in phasing, I think we're going to get an indication of what the numbers might look like after they do the first phase in April, April, early May. So that's going to give us some sense of what might come in phases two and three. If, once we enroll, let's say, phase one, because again, if they're doing this all at the same time, fortunately, kind of for us, we'd be hit with a lot of enrollments all at the same time. It's not going to be kind of like leaking in from, from time to time. We may have to look and say, you know, we don't have enough capacity to enroll phase two and three. I don't know exactly how the way the properties are set up out there. But we might have to say, all right, if you reside at phase two properties in these addresses, you're actually going to be designated to go to South Row as opposed to going to Harrington. Or may have to get to phase three, we might be able to do the first two or three. Now, it wouldn't be quite as clean, but we might actually just have to take certain pieces of the property and say, you know, here's, here's, we're going to rezone you at the time. But I'll know better when people actually start to, to register.
I have a question back on the, on the original Parker School. If you're not done with this one, finish this.
Just one more question.
Yeah.
When you sent, you know, the breakdown of the, when they're going to start to occupy, I, I don't remember in this project, how many of these were apartments? And how many of these were actual residences that are being sold?
There's, it's my understanding, nothing is being sold. This, this is all like leased, these are all leased properties?
These are all leased properties, okay.
I'm 99% sure.
When is this going to be completed?
But some are townhomes.
This year.
Yes, well, some are town, leased townhomes.
Sorry, I wasn't sure of the date.
This is the former West Campus?
Yeah, no, no, I remember now, yeah.
But no, it's my understanding, nothing is purchased, like nothing is sold.
Their website certainly implies it's all leases.
Yeah, they're all leased. It's just some of them, like when you drive in on the left, they look more like townhomes.
So, but there's all going to be rentals?
Rent, well, yes, but leases, not like month to month, but I think they'd be like annual sale leases.
So it makes it even more transitory.
From his first, your email, the first phase is 10 townhouses and 51 apartments.
Right.
So we may not get as many kids with 51 apartments.
How many bedrooms are there though? I mean, there's a lot to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of configurations.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
You have studios, one and two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Again, typically, you don't see a lot of kids coming out of studio and one bedroom apartments, typically. You know, two bedrooms certainly, if you ever got threes and more. But I think we just have to wait till we see some of the enrollments. And again, we can gauge a little bit based on the first year when that comes. Dennis, I don't have it up, is it April or May?
May 2025.
All right, May, so I mean, it'll be.
It's already May.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be.
End of May 2025.
It's when they, when they start, you know, signing leases. But we'll get a much better sense, I think, before we leave for the summer. And we can have that conversation. I can certainly keep you updated.
Thank you. All right, getting back to the building project, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just kind of the process. I know part of the preliminary design program is educational visioning and programming. And to me, that part's really important, but obviously finances have to rule it. How does that balance really work with looking at just what something costs based on educational programming and our vision for like that four to six, for instance? How does that, how do we kind of help to steer it toward what educationally and for the town make more sense as opposed to just being cost based?
Well, one of the key steps we have to do first is calling the education program. Like we have to basically craft almost like a proposal or, you know, a statement of kind of what's important to the town, what's important to our schools, what type of programs are we currently offering at Parker? You know, it's a two grade level school, but we're offering our academic program. We have space set aside for arts and music and band and things like that, so we have to designate that. We have special programming in the school for special populations, whether it be like students on the autism spectrum or life skills, things along those lines. So we need to basically say what we're currently using in that building, how it ties to what we want to do as a community in the years going forward, because we don't want to just do a replica of what we currently have. But we need to kind of make that case in our education program. But we will get feedback from, again, staff, students, the public to figure out exactly what we want to put in there. The MSBA, when it comes to like the funding piece, the three things we know is obviously the least expensive option, however expensive it is, is going to be the two grade level. The most expensive is going to be the four grade level. And then the sweet spot in the middle is going to be the three grade level, just because of the cost of construction. But the MSBA actually has certain parameters that they put on, you know, for the enrollment that we're trying to, to match or to marry. Like how many classrooms you would have for general ed, what are the size of the classrooms? Everything in construction works off of square footage costs and things along those lines. So it'll all kind of marry each other when we look at our three different options. And you look at like MSBA costs for square footage and number of rooms and spaces and what's allowable, what's not allowable. We could come up and say, you know what, we really want to have this particular program or this particular room. If that happens to not be something that the MSBA will participate in, then that's just something we have to think about. We can build that, but we're not going to get reimbursed for that. And that happens oftentimes in, in school projects too. There might be a space where we really say, we really want that. But an example may be the, the TV studio. Like Chelmsford Telemedia is currently at Parker. It's using the space, it's really not part of the regular program during the day. So the MSBA may come back and say, you certainly can build a TV studio in your school. But if you do, the square footage associated with that TV studio is not reimbursable, right? So that's going to then cost you X and they help you kind of figure that out. And as a community, we've got to come back and say, you know, is it important to us for this amount of money to actually have that be in there? Or when it comes to, this is going to be the cost for the two grade level, three grade level, four grade level, is it worth a little bit extra cost upfront because we're going to do the three grade level and it's going to help with our enrollment issues at the elementary level over the next 20 years? And that's going to mean that we can build the building and then not have to immediately jump in and build, say, an elementary school. So those are the conversations we're going to have to have. But it's all based on the education program that you put together to sell basically to the MSBA.
Okay, so there's, there's still a lot of value put into the vision for the programming.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I see there's a lot of architects on that panel, but there's also a lot of staff members who also, hopefully, will also look at it from the, what's educationally sound.
That panel is only to select the designer. Right, that's their only role, then they're done. We never go back to them again. So once we have the designer onboard, we then have an OPM under contract, we have a designer under contract, and then they're just working with us. They don't go back to the MSBA. They help us prepare all the documents because we do have to do the like schematic design, things like that for the MSBA. But you don't have to go back to that panel again. You're going back to the MSBA board.
Quick, just a quick question, are we also going to be evaluating like energy on this? So like thermal?
You have to.
Because, because like thermal is only good when you're building a building, but it, it reduces costs forever, right? So just stuff like that is going to come in.
Yeah, and like to retrofit a building with something like that?
It's impossible, right.
But you still have to prove it out because they're going to say, you know, yes, you could do geothermal, but it's going to cost you this on this renovation ad type thing. If it were brand new construction.
Right.
Here's what it's going to cost. Yes, it's more than natural gas. But as a community, do you want to look at the payoff over 20 years or not? They're going to make you go through all those scenarios?
Because I think that'll help when we get to like town meeting and stuff. Like how, so newer building reduces spending by this much. And, you know, if we're being more efficient and spending less money on water and this and that, it all does really add up.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that we're also really sound on our reasoning, beyond just what it costs.
And I think we're going to have experts that have, they have experts that come in with the design team that are going to be like experts on educational space and like.
Yeah, the.
Bill Ricka, I think they did Bill Ricka High.
The, well, the OPM, Leftfield. Yeah, Leftfield was the OPM for Barica, they're the OPM for Tingsborough right now. They just did a school in Groton as well as an elementary school. But yes, they have educational consultants. The designer is the one that carries the big ones though, so they have the, the people that are going to help with the facilitation of the different meetings and things. But yeah, we have to look at it all. And I think the one takeaway would be like whenever we present publicly whatever our preferred option is, that we have vetted every single possibility, that, that a resident doesn't stand up and say, they may not agree with everything, but they don't stand up and say, hey, did you think about, you know, we hadn't thought about, right? So we want to make sure we're going through everything. And we can make the argument as to why we're actually doing what we're doing.
So on the quality of education component, you know, or the use for educational purposes, what does the building committee then do? Do you create a subcommittee or do you add some members?
Well, they go through the whole.
From community and so on who can give more input?
That'll be part of.
To which one?
For the education, the use.
The part that's about building out the edge.
That'll be part of design.
Well, that'll, yeah, I mean, those will be like, do you remember when we did the facilities work a few years back? And we had like a lot of community sessions and like, that's going to be facilitated by the design group, right? So they're going to then basically be bringing back the information to the OPM, the designer and the group. They will be making presentations to the school committee as well. So like you will get presentations and opportunity for like input and to give your advice to different things. You typically, like when we do kind of whittle it down to, you know, of the three options, here's the one we want to go with. Traditionally, they do ask the school committee, do you have a preference? You know, because the school building committee, the 13 members ultimately needs to make a decision. But they usually like to have the school committee weigh in to say, this is what we think is actually the most educationally sound.
Got it.
This is what's going to kind of work for our community. But hopefully you would have all been part of that process, leading right up to that.
Okay, I feel confident about that.
Me, yeah. It's going to be very inclusive.
Now, you mentioned the public input. So once we have the designer, is that going to start in the fall?
In the fall.
So that's where we're going to get involved as a committee, right? So that's when we're going to have to have those public forums and host those public forums.
Just in time for Dennis to run for reelection next year.
I'm really excited for that phase of the work.
Right after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm excited for that phase of the work. And I, you know, you mentioned they're going to ask for our weigh in on the best model. I, I want to make sure some of those community fora happen before we're asked to weigh in because I want to hear what, what all across Chelmsford.
We're saying this, this fall, that's, we're going to start this.
It has to, like right after Labor Day, we're going to be hitting this hot.
So in terms of timeline, those forums happen before we select a model that.
Because they're getting, they're getting input all, all along the way.
Right, good, okay.
We come, we come back for the next school year, we're going to start, you know, that work, you know.
Yeah, by the end of June, by the end of next school year. My, you know, I think what they would say as well is like, we're going to basically have the preferred solution that we want to go with because we're then going to have to take that fall to be like preparing everything.
Right.
Or MSBA. So by December, by the end of the calendar year. So, um, by December, by the end of the calendar year, I see us basically, um, identifying like the the pros and cons of the ad renos, of the different options, you know, the, um, I'm sorry, what was it? Just a code upgrade and then say a new school project. This is all going to play out by then.
Great.
With honing into that one solution, which we're ultimately going to want to go in.
And I'm sorry to get like really nitty-gritty, but in in these cost comparisons and programmatic design comparisons and all of that, is there going to necess- I would think there would be necessarily be a look at the impact on the other buildings in the community and what work may need to be done to them? So, for example, if the five-to-eight option were to happen, I imagine the assumption would be that McCarthy would then potentially become an elementary space, which would incur costs, because right now it is not set up to be an elementary space. Is that sort of calculation part of this?
It's not.
The alternatives that are played out?
So the only, when it comes to actual like money out the door that people would be like voting on for this purpose, the only project that's at play is the Parker project. So if at the end of this project, let's say you did do the five-to-eight, right? The current Parker has to come offline. Under any scenario, the current Parker's coming offline. But in scenario three, the five-to-eight, McCarthy becomes open. So for MSBA purposes, uh, MSBA is not touching McCarthy. So what we would have to do is actually figure if that happened, that building would basically be turned back over to the town, let's say, empty, right? Um, we would have to, I mean, maybe the designer would help a little bit, or the OPM could potentially help with some, um, costs. But we would probably look back to our own facilities plans, because like we've already had the electrical and the, um, you know, all the infrastructure, the roofs and stuff like that, updated. So we kind of know like what money you'd have to put into McCarthy. But it's not going to be like a significant, like, they're not going to have the the same level of analysis for what happens to McCarthy, because this is really only considering Parker.
I I understand that, and I'm thinking, you know, as we look at the the four-through-six option, the advantage of, yeah, you're only serving three grades rather than four, but the advantage of that is that alleviates the elementary schools without the need to change the configuration or design of an existing building. Um, so leaving out whatever considerations come in programmatically about a a layout, to me, it feels like there's just a huge cost to then the McCarthy side of it that wouldn't be factored into the way that we'd be having these conversations. So I just want to make sure that it's not simply a a cost-alternative analysis, because I think we know that the costs are sometimes more than maybe what MSBA is going to be looking at.
Right. Yeah, and we can definitely stress that. And I'm sure it can be identified as costs. I just don't know is that like how exact it would be? Like, they actually have cost estimators on board, who are going to be doing all the projections for all of the Parker project. But it might be, um, more ballpark-type ideas when it comes to like what reuse of McCarthy might entail.
Another aspect of the design part, too, is we have to pick a location, you know?
Right.
We have to look at different locations and all the plus and minuses of those, too. So it could be Parker Field, could be High School Field, you know, we don't, we don't know.
How cool is all this, though? I mean, how interesting for like a school committee, it's exciting. The community will be involved. I think all those costs will get worked out. I think whatever we have to do with the, whatever grade configuration we choose, is a really neat thing that we get to do. And like, I think some of us have been working on it for like eight years now, like, so, um, it's good to actually see all this happening. But I do think they'll come back with great answers, and any questions we have, they'll be really keen on answering.
Yeah, they're a good group.
Yep.
And then, again, they can come periodically, just do a presentation to the school committee to keep you in the loop on things if you want to.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
You are welcome.
Okay, now the finances.
Yeah, so this is actually just the second set of, um, a few additional recommendations for one-time purchasing. We had brought the first larger list to you back in March, and those were approved and are underway. Um, we still have some projects that we're trying to finalize quotes for and things along those lines. Um, we have a second smaller batch that add up to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand that are before you tonight for approval. We'll likely have a follow-up, uh, smaller batch again before the end of the year. Um, but these are six or seven additional, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight additional, uh, projects related to, um, some upgrades we would like to make within the, um, the schools. Uh, I gladly, do you want me to run you through them, or do you want to just see if you have any questions?
Anybody have any question? I know if everybody's looked at the projects, anybody have any questions on any of them?
Just give us like a high level, I mean.
Sure. Um, so like the first one at at Center School, this is something, um, kind of aesthetically, we're trying to do. Is, um, and we usually do these, um, kind of school by school, but the curtains, the sh- the window shades in all of the classrooms and caf and things like that.
From like nineteen seventy?
They're in disrepair.
Yeah.
So, um, once and for all, we'd like to go through that entire school this summer and have them all be be replaced. So that was the first one.
And that's so worth it, because I can tell you one side of that hallway bakes.
Yeah.
When the sun comes in, and so you need good shades.
Um, the second item was just, um, Bill Silver working with, um, uh, the high school, Tom Peterson and group about doing an upgrade to the sound system at the high school. Yeah, it's needed. It's needed. The next one is just a smaller one for the Black Box Theater, purchasing a new conductor podium with, um, conductor stand. The wood shop, the fourth one is the wood shop in the high school is going to have some new staff next, um, year and be used for multiple purposes. So they're looking to, you know, completely vacate the space, um, just do a cosmetic paint job, floors, walls, uh, ceilings. Um, they want to purchase a new, uh, table saw with, uh, some better safety features on it, uh, for that space, again, just for the.
I'd love to see the stop safety feature on it.
Yeah, yeah, so that we've been fortunate, but, you know, when those kind of things exist, it's nice to have, um, so we'd like to add that.
If you want to, feel free to print these larger. Or I should bring my reading glasses.
Bring your computer, you can expand it, you can make it bigger.
I usually have it digital, like, and I'm like.
Zoomed.
I know, you can't. No, no.
A new, uh, new digital piano at, uh, McCarthy for work within the music program. A smaller one, just, uh, Parker, um, speaker sound system for the chorus room. And two, uh, water filling stations at, um, South Row. They have a couple now where they kind of fill the bottle under them.
Yeah.
Um, so we're just looking to buy two of those, because there are two bubblers that don't have them, and buy two of them so that they have the water filling station. DPW from the town will install them, we just physically have to buy the unit. So those are the items.
I certainly approve of doing that with the water filling. Is that something we're doing at all of the schools? Do they all have those water bottle filling stations yet, or are we working school by school?
I I honestly don't know. Um, so it's not that we're working school by school, I just happen to know that for whatever reason, South Row has some, and they're trying to add to the other ones. I will pay more attention when I'm walking through the other elementary schools to kind of see what they have. I honestly haven't, um, haven't noticed, but I'll look when I'm in the buildings to just see what they currently have. Um, I just happen to know, like I said, at South Row, for whatever reason, there are some, and they're looking to, um, to round out and have a couple.
So the requests come from the building level?
Yes, these are, yeah, whenever these one-time requests, like, we don't do it in isolation. So we ask the building admin, we ask the department coordinators, um, to speak with their staff and bring forward recommendations. So, and then we help them vet them out and get pricing and things like that. But these have come as requests from the schools.
All right.
I think the modules have them, right?
Question with PTOs.
The new modules have them, so.
Yeah, I, just curious.
Any questions on the list? Great list. All right, off the list, are we still looking to prepay some tuition when all is said and done, too?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, we haven't forgotten about that. Yeah, kind of, again, the three-pronged approach, but towards the end of June, we'll basically, um, come into a number, um, which, I think it's going to be that million and a half-ish range.
Um, actually, it might even have something sooner than that.
Oh, okay.
Talking to Amy Reese, um, she's working on that now.
Okay.
Like, what could we, um, you know, there's rules around those, how much you can prepay. And so she's quantifying that based on her students and all that, so we should, we'll be in good shape to it.
Because that's been a good strategy for us.
Yeah, but we'll do that again. Yeah, that's definitely part of it.
All right, so, um, can I have a motion on these items?
Okay, so, um, I move that we, okay, excuse me, that we approve the FY twenty-twenty-five local operating budget transfers totaling, I'm at that one, right? Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand four oh nine for the Chelmsford Public Schools as presented.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? All the account transfers are right there on your sheet, so.
Mm-hmm.
As presented, so.
Do you want me to go through it?
Nope, that's fine. Um, all right, so we'll take a vote. Susan?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We're going to get working on those.
Okay, great.
Uh, last night, we just had, um, and we didn't originally.
I was going to say, I didn't see them.
Yes, actually snuck one in.
All right, there you go.
Uh, there was one field trip request that came in that late. This is, uh, Chelmsford High School, the Best Buddies Program. Um, would like to go up to the, uh, Silver Knights Baseball Game, uh, in Nashville, New Hampshire.
Oh, thank you.
It's on, uh, May twenty-eighth.
Thank you very much. I moved that we approve the Chelmsford High School Best Buddies Program Silver Knights Baseball Game, Nashville, New Hampshire, on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, great. Thank you, Dan.
That's fine. Right, uh, anybody have liaison reports?
I have one. Um, the South Row PTO met last night. Um, and there's, as always, a whole lot happening. A topic was some of the end-of-the-year, um, moving-on ceremonies, because, um, as we have heard, this is a particularly large fourth-grade class, they're rethinking the way they are approaching the moving-on ceremony. They cannot physically hold it in the, uh, in the usual space indoors, so they are turning it into a picnic and hoping for no rain. Um, but they're kind of seeing the posi- positive possibilities of having a big group that kind of necessitates them to get creative and move a lot of the fourth-grade, um, end-of-the-year activities into new spaces. Um, they, um, also talked really highly about the April PD focused, um, on sort of affinity topic interests. So, um, things around fading tier-two supports, the foundations program, um, and AI in general, which they noted is is going to be a cross-district priority next year. And, um, finally, just hearing positive things about, um, the new MCAS platform going off pretty well, um, in their early days using it, which I've also heard from Parker and McCarthy.
Susan, you had something?
No.
Okay, Maria?
I have a couple of this. Uh, first of all, Recycle Day apparently was a huge turnout. Huge, 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 where there was a lot of backup, so, um, in the, in the, in the road, but, uh, tha- that's amazing. Uh, and that involves McCarthy and Center School. And then, um, CHS, they're after prom, which is the big event that CHS PTO runs, is going to be at the Elks Club this year, not at the Senior Center. And, uh, the collection bins are out for the folks who are donating, usually parents and so on, donate, um, gift cards and also items, food items for the event. So those bins are out, and they, um, are going to do their fundraiser, their big fundraiser, I believe, in September, at the beginning of the calendar year next year.
Good.
For this.
Well, I did hear that, yes.
Yes.
All right, John, you said nothing?
No.
I just had alumni associate met last night, uh, uh, and they're in the process of updating their website, which is a good thing if you've ever been on the website. Um, they're trying to streamline the process of, um, nominating people for Hall of Fame. Um, it used to be a fairly lengthy process, they're trying to make that a little bit easier. Um, speaking of Hall of Fame, they're going to try to rework the ceremony. Uh, it used to be a very formal dinner, uh, presentation, and they're trying to do something a little bit less formal in the pack, followed by, uh, uh, something at a local restaurant. So I think that's kind of a good idea to kind of move along with the times. And finally, they have, uh, their big event is their annual scholarship award ceremony is going to be on May the twentieth, which unfortunately is our next school committee meeting, so we won't be able to attend. But, uh, they have all these scholarships ready to pass out, they're going to send out some emails to kids, and hopefully it'll be a great event, so.
Wonderful.
All that stuff. All right, anybody have any new items? I had two things. Uh, one is I I noticed on the district website and social media, we're doing a survey of parents. Um, is that, we do that normally, you know, who gets that information? What do we do with that information?
We, um, so this is part of, um, you know, strategic plan, but part of using like that panorama. So it's a way, we do student surveys.
Yeah.
Now, we're doing staff surveys and then family surveys, so that we can get some feedback about the district and things that we can do in order to make our goals for next year as well.
Have we done this in the past, or?
We have, yeah.
Okay.
So this is, um, uh, we've, we've probably done it, this is our third year. We've done it different ways before, but like using Panorama, this would be our third year, using Panorama.
And so is that information we can see at some point, like the results?
Yeah, you can see like the overview will be, and that's something that we'll use when we have our, um, meetings with the DM group, the strategic plan.
It's one of our strategic areas we report out on.
Yep, and that will probably be what will be presented when we, they come on the seventeenth of June.
Yes, second meeting in June.
All right, the only other thing, is is there any update on where we are with, uh, new graduation requirement? Uh, is is that just?
No, we're trying to get through the class of twenty-twenty.
I know that, right?
Our sense is, like, you have to remember, the class of twenty-twenty-six is kind of in the same boat as the class of twenty-twenty-five, right? Because they've already taken their tests, right? So, um, we're probably going to see maybe more of a repeat performance, but the governor has put together that, um, working group
Yeah.
of educators, so I'd like to see how that pans out. This still gives us another year if we decide to go with what we did for the class of twenty-twenty-five for twenty-twenty-six. You know, great, we have a little bit of breathing room, but it would be also great to find out what kind of information is coming from both the governor's office and Department of Education on this, because there is supposed to be some type of graduation requirement moving forward, um, a competency determination for those other classes. So before we start making decisions on our current sophomores and above, we we should find out what direction they'd let us to go in.
Okay, and our current seniors, we'll be able to deal with all the moving pieces there?
Current seniors, because we, if you remember, we defaulted back to, um, kind of like the COVID protocols when MCAS wasn't administered and that was partially administered, um, a lot of kids did it online, even at home. We are aware of relying on the approved coursework from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and we still have that, and we still have the course codes for that.
Okay.
So we're very confident in our program of studies at the high school. So I think that's like a good route, um, for at least the upcoming class. And then let's see what they have, what they come out with for moving forward for competence determination for the classes beyond the class of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, great.
A question, um, for the funding at the, from the federal level for Title I and for, uh, the food programs, anything, any impact at all, or are we steady and go? Everything's been good?
Twenty-twenty-six, we'll know this summer.
Okay.
Um, we just filed our intent to participate, so they know, and then we'll get our allocations, um, soon.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, typically by the end of July, mid-July is typically when they come out with those.
All right.
My only other question is, Lotta, is this next meeting your next, last meeting, or? I guess the next meeting is, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be so sad.
We got to.
Hey, I've been trying to get out of here for nine years, I get it.
So, we're going to miss you on a, I.
You'll be here next time.
Patrick was mentioning last meeting that there were elections going on.
Yeah, I wonder who the very lucky person will be.
Be hard to replace, you know?
No, I'll be sad. I get like emotional randomly, so if I cry, be ready.
Wait till you see a celebration.
Okay, um, we don't have any other public comments, so.
I do have one more thing about, um, new, new.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Items. I did see that in this, um, week's Commissioner's Weekly Report from DESI that there was a suggestion that districts start to implement, um, teacher signing days, just the way that they have signing days and they give recognition to students when they commit to playing sports at a specific college. They are, um, suggesting that schools recognize graduating seniors who intend to pursue a career in education. So I'd just like to hear in the future if that might be something we might want to start considering doing.
High school does do that, um, so any of the students that have taken coursework, um, towards that or have intent to do that, they have a signing day for those students.
For future teachers?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay. I saw that in the newsletter, I thought, that's wonderful.